And at the end of three minutes, you'll be notified. We'll give you a warning and you'll be asked to be seated. Thank you. Are there any public presentations on agenda items, agenda items only? Seeing none. Routine approvals. It is recommended that the Board of Directors approve the minutes of the June 25, 2012, School Board Meeting, the August 13, 2012 Special Voting Meeting, and the August 13, 2012 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Motion A, A through C.
Second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Seminero.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
And Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Presentation by Board members. Mr. McCullough, any secretary correspondence?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, I received, the Board has received several cards and thank you letters from the PSSA group that we sponsored last year, they went to Nashville. So rather than read them all, I'll pass them around. There's several schools who wish to go for allowing them to go. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Kurtz is not here for the BCIU Board Report. Mr. Wolf?
Yes. The Board of the BCTC met last Wednesday at the East Campus. Two items of interest. First, we received the results of the NOKI exam, which is, NOKI stands for National Occupation Competency Testing Institute. There's three parts to this test. The kids must score competent, or at least competent on the test. They must have achieved the required hours of instructional time and their students' discipline. And, of course, they have to graduate high school. The results of the test was that 93% of the combined East and West Campus students achieved that. It subsided in the last year. For comparison, the state average is 22%. The second was, if you've read yesterday's Red Eagle, the Drive section, there's a very nice article that featured some of the students that did a restoration project. One of the students on there was a student from Daniel Boone. Hopefully I will pronounce his name right. Jimmy Reinder. They restored a 1937 Chevy Roadster pickup. The West Campus, their project was a 1966 Ford Mustang. I actually got to see the Ford pickup when we had our last meeting. What amazed me about that project was how many of the different disciplines within the school actually participated in everything, of course, from body shop, painting, welding. They had students do a custom dashboard made out of wood. It looked very nice. So it was very good to see that students were recognized. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There's no student government report. Legislative report. Actually, there's two things that make note that I've noticed. We all get this student government thing and reading through it with some of the changes that will be made. I think the one that sticks out and that will make anybody here that has family, has a child who is a junior this year, that there will be no PSSA testing for 11th grade this year. Is that Keystone's now? The Keystone's, yes. But again, but the Keystone's, the Keystone Algebra I and Biology will be administered to all 11th graders instead of the PSSAs. So they're trying to phase that into what they're doing with the Keystone's, being very similar to what New York State does with their regions as they move on. It would be interesting. Additionally, I would like to ask the Board's, how was it, approval, but agreement, to have the administration draft a resolution that we could send to our elected officials. There's two bills currently in Harrisburg, 1400 and I believe 1776, asking them to not only get our elected official's support, but get them out of committee and onto the floor for some type of debate. Right now, they're still locked up in committees. And I think that there's an awful lot of, at least personally from what I've been doing and following it, and reading some of the stuff coming from the DBTA, that there's a lot of smoke and mirrors going on right now with trying to confuse a lot of people what these bills actually will do. You know, let's get them out and get them talked to. And if the Board doesn't have any issue with that, have Dr. Otto, the administration, draft a Board Resolution that we could sign and forward on.
Should we vote on that, or do we just? You can give a directive to the administration.
I'm sure there are other school districts that have done this.
There are others that are doing it and are doing it, but I think it'd be.
Yep. Go ahead and do it.
We can find a template.
No objections. No objections. If you could do that, then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let the minutes show. Okay. Any other reports? Okay.
Excuse me, but we have to bring that back then for Board approval, or can we just go ahead?
Is this a formal resolution, or are you just directing a letter?
A formal resolution.
Oh, then should we come back to words?
Has to come back, right. We'll bring it back to the Committee of the Whole in September.
Okay. With no other reports, moving on to buildings and grounds.
Excuse me, don't you want to go to the 13?
Oh, no, we're going to do that after building and grounds.
There's nothing.
No building and grounds, okay. It is recommended the Board of Directors accept the Accountability Block Grant for $154,447 for the school year 2012-2013.
Shall we move on?
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Seminero.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Act of Financial Approvals. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve the attached course credit request for tuition reimbursement, salary step movement, and/or advancement.
A through G, please. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Seminero.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Motion approved.
11H. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve a revised budget in the amount of $50,776,154 as presented by the District Administration pursuant to Act 82, 2012. Any discussion?
Again, this voice might fade. I don't see them, they're doing this. When in that effect, it's going to be $66,000, but I just think it's a somewhat wasted time and cost. But we all know those five, six items that we can make those corrections if you want to, so that on our worksheets for this year's budget. I just think it's a lot of work and cost and time that we don't necessarily need to do.
Well, let's be clear about that. I thought there was no additional cost.
There is no cost. It's time.
Well, yeah, there is. There's time and there's, there is. It's expensive.
It is some cost. Is there a balance?
There is some cost.
The advertising cost and the cost for postage.
For the, what do we?
There's no fees associated, but there's some cost already, right?
No, they were.
There was fees for advertising and the postage.
Okay.
But the public will have them.
The public will have the most up to date, and we will have the most up to date numbers.
So I think it would be fair to say beyond postage and printing, whatever, there's no cost per se. There's no fee.
The rest is sunk. Yeah. Okay.
Got it up there.
Roll call vote?
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Seminero.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, no. Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Personnel approvals. It is recommended the Board of Directors approve the following appointments. As amended.
Through, uh?
As amended.
A through D?
A through D?
A through D.
Yes.
Is it graded?
Yeah.
A through B as amended? D as amended?
Yeah, A through D, yes. I'd like to amend that 4A be removed and 4K be removed.
Under, under A?
Yes.
A for A and A for?
I don't want to know if I should abstain.
Yes, I believe you should. That's, that's my point.
Except for A for? So A and K are removed from this vote?
Yes, 4A, A.
4A, 4K.
Yeah. A for K, A, A for K.
The reasoning is Frank's wife.
Right.
Wife is J.
Yeah, and Mr. Seminero's wife is a volunteer and Mr. Wolf is going to vote as a volunteer.
So he's A, J, and K.
Yes, A, J, and K.
That's your issue. Yes. Everybody got that?
Any discussions? Roll call vote?
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Seminero.
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Motion approved.
It is recommended that we approve 12A for A.
Right.
First. Yes. Neither first. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Um, Mr. Wolf.
Abstain.
No, you can vote. That's Mr. Seminero.
So you're only doing, you're only doing?
We'll get through this.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're only doing?
Just doing A.
Okay. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Seminero?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
And Mr. McCullough, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
And Mr. Sheen.
Yes. Now, it recommended we approve 12A for J and K.
Shall we move?
Second.
Discussion?
Hope not.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Seminero, yes. Um, Mrs. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. And Mr. McLaughlin, yes. Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, abstain. And Mr. Sheen.
Yes.
Motion approved.
14 are just the first reading of policies.
And then they are under review with Mr. Sheen.
15, transportation. Anything under transportation?
No.
16 is old business.
I do have two matters. Actually, the Title IX study status is, we have been working with the Office for Civil Rights. The timeline for that study has been extended to the end of October. And the administration, I'll be working with the Athletic Facilitator regarding the production of requests of information. And then at that point, it'll be sometime before, it'll be quite, sometime before we receive OCR's response, but I have been in continued communication with them. The second item is just to announce that President Judge Schmel did grant the School Board's petition on August 23, 2012 regarding the new regional election plan for the School Board. The Board petition for the approval and Judge Schmel approved the continuation of the three-region plan. However, the regions will now be constructed as follows. Region 1 will, which was originally the Amity region, is now Amity Precincts 3, 4, and 6. Region 2, which was the original Union region, Union Township region, will now be constructed of Union Township Precincts 1 and 2 and Amity Precinct 5. And Region 3, the original Burksborough Borough region, will be constructed of Burksborough Precincts 1 and 2 and Amity Precinct 1. The relevant information was presented to Judge Schmel in open court. No opposition was made to the Board's petition, and Judge Schmel granted the petition. These new regions will appear on the ballot for the 2013 primary and municipal elections, and the new regional representation will take effect the first week of December of 2013, when those Board members elected in those, that municipal election will officially take office. The court order approving this will become final after the 30-day appeal period has expired, which will be September 22, 2012. So this order will be a final order September 23, 2012.
If I may add, just for the benefit of the public that is here and for the press, that we will, once it is finalized with that 30-day appeal period, go on an advertising campaign with the entire community so that the entire electorate of the district is aware of the change. We'll probably do that through maybe some mail flyers, putting it on the internet, maybe a Connect Ed call. We want to try to get everybody, because there are sometimes people just don't interface with the school, except when it comes to election time. So we're going to make sure we do a blanket campaign of making sure we advertise it so that everyone knows come election time.
And just so, as there may be people out there wondering why we went about this effort, I believe that the Constitution allows for one man, one vote, and the way we were previously aligned years and years ago, it probably worked out well, but with the explosion of the population of Amity Township, it did not afford one man, one vote because of that. So what we did is we realigned Mr. McCullough. I represented Amity Township, Mr. McCullough, Burksborough, and Mr. Basil, Union Township. So each of the townships were represented. We sat down and looked at the voting, the population in each of the townships, each of the precincts, and aligned them so that they're as close to being even as possible, and also understanding that, you know, there's potential growth in certain areas, and we didn't want to have to do this again with the next census. So there's a little bit of leeway in some of the areas so that it will get done and will fly properly, and hopefully pass through the next census, so. Any new business?
Yeah, one second. And I know it's only Mr. Kurtz's first meeting, but Mr. Kurtz is our BCIU rep. I think we should either name an alternative or somehow make it aware that he probably will not be able to attend those meetings, nor do I think they allow Skyping or teleconference. I'm not sure. So I don't know. We do not have a Brooks County, I mean, an IU alternate. I don't know if we can.
Do we have an alternate?
No, we do not. That's what I'm saying.
Don't we always name an alternate?
So can we at least name, think about naming an alternate, that if Mr. Kurtz cannot attend, that we should have a representative there? Just a thought. We do for the BCTC, but not the IU.
Okay.
Again.
He's my backup for the TCC also.
Well, that's.
Again, I'm just.
Okay.
And so when it's all come like October and November, and we realize that no one's been attending meetings through Daniel Boone, because again, it's possible, but I'm not sure. I don't know if anyone has an account on that. Can we name an alternate? Well, you could. There's no problem naming an alternate, then I guess, as in conjunction with that, just direct the administration to inquire as to Mr. Kurtz's intentions regarding future attendance at those meetings. Again, I'm just looking a little bit ahead, that's all. I'm done.
Okay.
No comments, but somebody might want to sit forward. Mr. Basil.
Yeah. Is anybody interested in being the alternate? I know we're all on a number of committees and appointments, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll have to hammer that out sometime.
Yes, we'll have to have that. And with that, committee dates. We're starting the new school year, obviously. Have the committee chairs given Dr. Otto those dates of, obviously, where the curriculum instructions, the third, the first Thursday of every month moving forward? Yes.
At this point, as I recall, Facilities is deferring until first Monday in October. REC is meeting in September, 3rd, on the 19th. So that takes care of those two. We're meeting September 7th?
No, the.
We're going to October.
Yeah, correct.
So we've deferred to October, so that.
Get things rolling.
And policy is still, at this point, again, that's something else I need to discuss with Mr. Kurtz, since he is the chair, as to how we're going to move forward with policy.
I don't believe the chair can do that probably remotely very well, but there's three others here that could sit in as chair, and he would have to phone in, that I would assume. So he could be a functioning chair, but just not leave the meeting. I mean, I don't want to take it away from him. He seems like he's, he really gets into that policy stuff, and he really digs it out pretty well, so.
But to answer your question, yes, we are on the schedule.
One other thing before we move on is received on email today at 6:32 PM, no, because I take that back at 4:30 PM, from Mr. Perella, the new policy that the, regarding school lunches, that they're no longer going to allow students that have not insufficient funds in their accounts to charge lunch at the high school and middle school level. If you don't have any money in your account, you're not going to be allowed to eat. At the elementary school level, you'll get a cheese sandwich, apple, and carrot sticks. I think the, and I did talk to Dr. Otto, he calls it a new policy. Obviously, we pass policies and.
It's a procedure.
It's a new practice or new procedure moving forward. So just if you get an email or any conversation on that, if you haven't received it already.
Just to make the Board aware, the alternative to that is we run in the red, and I don't, I'm not recommending that we do that. It's really kind of a financial decision. We will work one-on-one with families, and we'll try to make sure that if there's anyone in a struggling situation, that we'll work with them, but in some cases, we were running with certain families, $200, $300 in the red. You can't do that, so.
I thought, I thought we had a limit. I thought there wasn't.
No, there wasn't any, as far as I know, there wasn't any. Danielle, you can help me. I don't know if there was any set limit.
And there's also, there is also, like, two weeks left for school year, you can't go under, correct?
Right.
There used to be that.
Plus, they also give the call to the parents.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's constant communication.
Is that a calculation to know how many times they did call that, so we can get a recognition there is a problem, and then we can get a little parent? Or are we going to wait for the parents to call in and say, I have an issue, and Johnny still comes home with no money, or to receive?
Well, the process right now is we use the Connect Ed to call, to send warning that you're.
And then what do we do after?
Well, we will start stopping it now. We hadn't before. We're continuing to let it run into the red until at some point we would stop it.
What do you mean if they do tell us? When they come out? We go, they all have to come out?
Sure.
We know. Is there a process to tell the parents when the funds are critically low?
Yeah, she'd get emails.
You'd email a letter or a phone call?
Parents get emails, too. Okay. So they know prior to.
Yeah, there's no secrets. I mean, it's not, we're not blindsiding anyone with the information.
Yeah, there's actually, the child gets told in the lunch line that their funds are low.
And then you get emails.
And then also, you get an email. If you're on the automatic pay, or even if you're, you can set the rate at where you want to know, whether it's $5, $10, and then you get the email.
It's like Easy Pass. You get low funds.
Like a prepaid.
Yeah.
So I think what Mr. Sheen was pointing out, the word "policy" was used in the email, and really, it's not a policy, it's a procedure. Since we're watching that very closely, I think that's a point well taken.
I think as long as we want.
Is that if you sign up through it? Or if you just pay cash?
Then.
Then you're day by day.
You're day to day.
Okay, but sometimes they do let you run a tab.
They're no longer going to allow you to run a tab.
At all.
No more. Elementary, you will, because you need to provide them a meal, but it will be a cheese sandwich, according to the email. Don't be lactose intolerant.
Just wanted you to be aware of that. That's something that sometimes will spur phone calls.
Presentation by the public on non-agenda items, please. Have your name and address.
Jennifer Hennold, 803 North and Obse Street, Brooklyn.
I didn't get her name. We didn't get that?
Jennifer Hennold, 803 North and Obse Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, we're having, we are actually having, is it something different? We're having trouble hearing you, so.
Well, it's the way that.
Better.
Better?
Yes.
Jennifer Hennold.
Yes. Yes, one more time.
Jennifer Hennold, 803 North and Obse Street, Brooklyn.
And if you'll sign in, okay. Thank you.
Hi, yes. I have questions and I have school supplies. I have a son that's in first grade at APC. And I have friends who have first-years going to APC and BEC. And in our conversation of school supplies, I found it interesting that each school not only has a separate list, but there are different providers who have entities supplying the school supplies. And just to give you a little quick rundown, APC, I have a son, it's the basics, tissues, hand sanitizer, front door stickers, hood and locks. Same thing pretty much for NBC. And then you look at Burksborough Elementary, the first grade, which was my uncle. Three kettle highlighters, two 24-hour classes, very old cameras, one 24-hour class, and all the little pencils, one pack of three-way spray wazers, one box of tissues, two packs of lab accident masks, low odor cleans, one hair eraser, eraser, and one hood and locks.
It's just a discretionary thing.
My question is, APC and BEC, clearly stated on the website, these are the supplies that your child needs to require, needs to have with them. On the NBC website, it says, these are suggested supplies. And when asked for it, it says, please, it is not necessary to buy supplies with a backpack. But if interested, you guys can follow it, I just want to feel for a regular. I heard this up because fortunately, not good, my husband's gainfully employed, we have full school supplies. But if you look at how much these exist in, particularly at the Burksborough Elementary, that's probably $20, if you have one shot. That's a Dr. Dicocaine, that's a Neophyridium, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just curious, what is the deciding factor of which schools have to pay for supplies that we show? Is the BEC supplying supplies at some schools? I'm just curious to know why certain schools, or why some parents obviously they were, they would. Pretty bad, I don't know, we have a wall, and everyone kind of is pretty tough.
Well, I mean, Pete, the parent teacher, so they do provide some supplies to some of the buildings. It's discretionary by building. The buildings have their budgets, and some of the supplies may have been included in their budgets, and some of them may not be included in their budgets. As far as, as, you know, the fact that your husband's gainfully employed, if somebody else has problems, income problems, and are not able, there's no way that, you know, they're going to be forced to buy materials that they can't afford to buy. I mean, we've never done that as a district or as a board, and they would not be forced to have to purchase them. There'd be a way to find to get them that material.
Yeah, we just see policy. It's a lot of the kids on campus to buy. So it's on a daily basis by school. They have the ability to choose and their budget basis.
Well, again, each building is different age, each building has different supplies left over.
Well, you said.
I know, but BEC is a little older than Monocacy and ABC, so based upon the materials left in the school from the previous year and everything else, they come up with a discretionary list of materials. Okay?
We'll check into that. I mean, I, there is, again, what Mr. Sheen is mentioning, that there's some of the discretion with what some of the teachers do at the individual classroom level, but we'll certainly look into it and make sure there is consistency across the buildings.
Okay. And then, I just want to say, is that the products?
Real quick.
Real quick. I just, I just kind of, I don't want to hold the fact that we are setting small targets to purchase Coke products and a school can get money through Coke points when they adjust the cafeteria menu, there's more food for the parties, which is such a benefit of the town of the BDC. And to be serious, it seems odd to me that we're basically saying, go there, it's just one of the worst things you can have in a town. I think that's a little bit of a school.
Well, again, we don't know, if we could get that, we don't know, I've not seen that and I'm not sure the administration's seen that, so.
I approve all flyers. I have not seen that, so I'd be very interested in seeing that.
Yeah.
No, seriously, I would like it.
2025, I was supposed to drive, I just, I was, and just co-chair, co-chairs, I'm there in Boone, taxpayer, I just stated, oh, I'd like to thank the board for your proposed resolution in support of House Telecations, except for the six, and stated all towards the hundred. This is what we can work towards to try and get both those houses to floor. City Committee, nothing will ever be done, so. And when you get into a floor room, you'll find out once the draw, have any chance of that or not. So again, thank you.
I never saw this. Did you?
My name is Christopher, now, 2007, Rose Tompkins. I have a letter that I sent to Tompkins, to most of the rest of the school, remember back on July 4th, 2012, affecting my son, an incident happened in the last year. And I like to read, let's read it out, let me get your comments on this. Says, I'm a longtime resident of Douglasville, I have children that are either ten or currently ten, people who've been in the county this school. And I'm ready to express my concern regarding disciplinary action committed to my son, who at the time was a freshman at my school. Disparate action apparently, April 3, 2012, was initiated by Mr. Maynard, Assistant President. The, excuse me, disparate action included three days' suspension and a private criminal complaint filed on us. For ethnic harassment and disloyal conduct, all of which was based on the investigation of the incident. As a result of this private criminal complaint, the public sued directly the office of the citizen, several students witnesses, and the parents of all of these students. In my discussions with the student directly involved in the citizen, as well as his parents, the student was unaware of what was said by my son. The student also stated that he would not have been attended, in fact, he did hear what was said by my son, who were and continue to be good friends to this dead. After my discussions with the student and the parents, I have taken legal counsel for my son, led not guilty to these charges, and was prepared to argue our case in our District Justice, dated last June 13, 2012. Preparation for our case, two way decision agreed to testify to my son, all with, excuse me, the support and encouragement of the parents. These way decision included a student directly involved in the citizen and a student who witnessed the entire incident as well. Unfortunately, my son's hearing position less than continuance, the request of Fox Wolf trial, LLP, as they were obtained by Mr. Miller, as he's leading now. In response to the statements, my son's attorney called and ordered petition for a hearing, in court, common duty, which was granted and occurred in front of Judge Bakabella, who maintained, 2012. Through this emergency hearing, Fox Wolf trial was forced to take my Mr. Miller, filed these charges against my son, as well as why Mr. Miller had the authority to do so. In the hearing filed, Fox Wolf trial's case, Judge Bakabella threw out all charges against my son, as Mr. Miller did not follow protocol, did not have the sole authority to file a private criminal complaint against my son, or anybody else. Basically, these events impacted my son's on street fairly, my son's civil rights revile, I have to remember. I'm requesting that you include it in the ongoing agenda, which is today. I'm requesting the time to review directive of the school for regarding the filing of three points.
You have 15 seconds left, okay? We do have that letter by, so.
Okay. What we've done, you should follow protocol, we filed the private criminal complaints, the complaints they have, reviewing previous criminal complaints by Mr. Miller and all the other faculty members. And number three, what's this very action, complaining to Mr. Lord, right now, by acting on the five legs, school's civil rights.
Okay, I, if three minutes are up, we, I'm going to let Mr. Subers direct, but one thing is we are reviewing the policy that is in place at, in the School Board as far as what occurred here as our civil complaints are concerned. Anything else as far as administrative or litigation, we're not going to discuss in public. We'll let Mr. Subers.
I mean, I don't have a lot to say, other than you also provided me with a copy of your letter, Mr. Alcarro, and I reviewed that and made some recommendations to the Board, which are attorney-client privilege. I think that your statement of the facts is not completely accurate. I did request the continuance of the District Justice hearing, Mr. Miller did after being threatened by your attorney with a lawsuit. I did present, represent the District before Judge Bakabella. Judge Bakabella did dismiss the private criminal complaint, not because it failed to follow the rules of criminal procedure, as argued by your counsel, but because of the insufficiency of the affidavit of probable cause, which was not argued by your counsel. That was a matter of suaspekte by the judge. But in any event, the complaint was dismissed, that is accurate, but for reasons other than those presented by your counsel. The recommendation that I made included a review of the Board policy, or Board procedures regarding the filing of criminal complaints. It is my opinion that Mr. Miller had the authority as a district representative to file a private criminal complaint. However, whether or not the Board wishes to continue that practice is something that will be reviewed by the Board, and I suggest that possibly preparing a Board policy addressing private criminal complaints, if they're in fact going to continue that process.
Okay, the Board, we're going to have the administration, Dr. review and respond to you in writing his, our recommendations. Okay?
Well, where does he go?
Anybody else from the public?
I have one coming down.
Hello, Karen Spire, U of M. First of all, thank you to ABC for many of us, and the countless hours to try to help keep our taxes in check. Again, in particular, we're struggling about that as everything increases, our wages drop, so we really appreciate anything you can do to keep our taxes from going up. Besides that, interesting point, with the lunch, I wonder for years, for various factors in Anderson at this time, and many things you can think about, I'm not quite sure how many teachers in the enterprise district, give me a one.
About 200.
A little over 200, 220.
280 something.
280?
Okay. Close to 300. Now, I don't think any correct, but I think for some reason, we had breakfast for a regular place, and basically, we had a vacuum cleaner sitting for 15 minutes every morning, and you do the manual, that's a lot of money, sitting while we're busy cutting corners and other places, so I don't know collectively, we could just watch that breakfast program.
The teachers are not paid hourly, they're paid for the day. So if you want to take that.
They have annual salary.
Yeah, they're an annual salary. So if you take that 15 minutes away in the morning, then you let them go 15 minutes earlier in the evening. I mean, they're an annual salary.
We're not teaching while we're waiting for students to eat breakfast. Basically, we all know we have breakfast. So, and what I think is, you know, we're not looking to find a way to trim, you know, people who can't afford lunches, and I wonder, I'm really just wondering, saying, I'm getting breakfast, and again, we address this all the time in our classrooms.
Okay, well, I chaired a curriculum committee and we'll look into that. There's a couple other things we've asked, with the elimination of Channel 1, using that time in homeroom and some other things for extra study time. We're not going to be able to add it to instructional time, but maybe as extra study time or something along. We'll investigate that.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.